Good morning, Mr. Chair. We are live whenever you're ready to start.
Good morning, April. Thank you. Um, my apologies for our tardiness here. It is 10:05. I'm not yet starting. I'm, I'm, I'm just waiting for, um, for us all to get here from, uh, we were just in the, the Public Health and Human Services Board meeting. And I do see a number, uh, two one eight three four one oh eight zero zero. Um, I don't think that's Commissioner Starley.
David?
Yes.
Uh, this is Mike Crotto. That's me. I guess I'm, um, that's, that's my, my other personality that maybe I, I did a, uh, technical faux pas.
Well, no, that's, that's great. I do the sa- I, I'm the same way. I got my, I got my phone number and I got my video number. So, I just didn't know. Thank you very much.
You bet.
I think we're just waiting, um, for Commissioner Starley. All right. Commissioner Starley, can you hear us?
I'm here.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, good morning, everyone. Welcome. Um, I'll call the, committee the whole work session, uh, to order here. Um, 10:09, Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. Um, we, uh, first item is, uh, the minutes from, from, uh, last meeting. We can, we assume everyone has reviewed and otherwise we can move on to, um, presentations. And, and starting out, um, we have Patty, is it Thielman? Oh, I'm sorry, Administrator Yorki.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We, do you want to read the disclaimer about the virtual meeting?
Oh, you know, I probably should. Um, let me pull that up here. Oh, it's on my other device, I'm afraid. Uh, standby. All right, item number one. It has been determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent because of the COVID-19 pandemic and the related peacetime emergency declaration made by Governor Walz in accordance with Minister Statute's Chapter 12. Number two, we have ensured that all members of the body participating in the meeting wherever their physical location can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony offered at today's meeting. Number three, we have also ensured that members of the public present at the regular meeting location of the body can hear all discussion, testimony, and all votes of the members of the body. We have urged the public not to attend this meeting in person because of the COVID-19 pandemic and have ensured that members of the public can view and monitor the meeting remotely in real time by broadcasting the meeting on the Cook County website. Number four, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we have determined that it is unfeasible for County Auditor Brady Powers, County Attorney Molly Hickon, County Administrator James Yorki, and members of the Board of Commissioners to be physically present at the county boardroom at the Cook County Courthouse. Number five, all votes will be conducted by roll call, so each member's vote on each issue will be identified and recorded. However, this is a work session, so there will be no votes taken. Thank you, Administrator Yorki, for that reminder. And, um, again, my apologies for delays and tardiness. And now, all that being said, welcome again, everyone. And, uh, Patty, would you like to introduce yourself and, and start, um, with, uh, with your presentation?
Sure. Thanks, Commissioner. Um, first, I'll just check, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I, uh, live about thirty miles north of Marcel and we don't have great internet up here, so some ta- some days it's better than others. Um, my name is Patty Thielan. I'm DNR's Northeast Regional Director. And, uh, I've been in this role for a few years and I had been getting out and trying to meet county boards across the northeastern part of the state that makes up my work area. And, uh, of course, COVID made me pause that last year. Um, but I thought since county boards are sometimes meeting virtually, I thought I'd start trying to do some virtual visits. Uh, I remember meeting Commissioner Mills a while back at a Northern Counties Land Use Coordinating Board Meeting and Tour. And I've had the oppor- opportunity to meet, uh, virtually, meet Commissioner Hawkins at N-Club Virtual Meetings this year. So, it's nice to at least virtually meet the other board members. And while I'd rather be there in person, I'm excited to be here today, um, 'cause my career with DNR really began in Cook County. Um, what I'm hoping to do here today, I'm, I'm not asking for anything. I just want to introduce myself and share a little bit about my role at DNR. Uh, I want to share a little bit about DNR in general. Um, sometimes people think of DNR as that one instance that they had a, had an exchange with DNR. And for my dad, that was when he got a ticket for not having his snowmobile registered. So, when, uh, he thi- thought of DNR, he thought of that. Uh, but we do a lot of different work besides that. Um, and then I'm gonna touch on our Strategic Land Asset Management Program, or SLAM. Um, first, a little about me. I've lived and worked in northern Minnesota for twenty-five years, but I grew up in the Twin Cities. Uh, I was lucky when I was a kid to, my parents had a cabin. And since I was pretty little, I always have loved being outside. Um, in my twenties, I decided that I didn't want to, uh, go to the cabin. I wanted to live at the cabin. And I stumbled across the College Natural Resources at the University of Minnesota where I studied forest management. Um, I did a summer internship with DNR Forestry in nineteen ninety-five in Grand Marais that, uh, really helped me know that this is what I wanted to do. Uh, I learned a lot working with local staff that summer. Um, I had an opportunity to work on my first wildfire, the Devilfish Lake Fire, um, which actually turned out to be on Lake Marie or something. But Devilfish Lake was just too cool of a name, so it stuck. Um, in fact, I remember that summer, uh, going along with our, our fire program forester from the DNR office to a county meeting, uh, talking about, uh, fire restrictions that summer because there was a pretty extreme fire danger. Uh, my first real job with DNR was in Bedet, uh, up on the bump on the top of Minnesota. That was a little further than I intended to get from the Twin Cities at first. Um, but I lived and worked there for fifteen years and, uh, um, learned a lot about forest management, fire suppression, um, and about DNR in general. Uh, I worked in Grand Rapids Regional Forestry Office, supporting the seven forestry areas in the northeast, um, for about seven years. Um, each of these job changes, I spent a little less time outside, unfortunately. Um, my current role, uh, that I've been in for about a half years, I don't get to go outside for work much at all anymore. Uh, every once in a while, though. But, uh, my role is not only to guide staff and supervisors in the northeast, um, to work together to achieve the department's mission. Um, my work spans across all of DNR's divisions, over thirteen hundred employees. Um, but I also do a lot of outreach. Oh, somebody's trying to call me here, sorry. Um, I, I, I do a lot of outreach with a lot of DNR's partners. Uh, there's the nine counties in the northeast region, federal agencies, like the Forest Service that's here today. Um, we work with tribes, other state agencies, um, various stakeholder groups. Uh, I report to the Commissioner's Office. My boss is Deputy Commissioner Barb Naromore. So, you can think of me as a local contact to DNR's Commissioner's Office. Um, I normally office out of Grand Rapids, uh, but for the last year, I've been working from my home near Marcel. Um, I'll tell you a little bit about each of DNR's divisions. Um, first enforcement, um, besides giving tickets to my dad for not registering his snowmobile a million years ago. Um, our enforcement division also enforces fish and game laws. Um, they participate in search and rescue, and I know that happens, uh, frequently in the Boundary Waters. Um, they participate in firearm safety training, boat and water safety programs. Um, they have agreements with local law enforcement, county, state highway patrol, and others, um, for any roles that require a licensed peace officer. Um, over the last year, they've had some really unusual, uh, extracurriculars, uh, from, uh, participating in, supporting some of the civil unrest going on in the Twin Cities, to political candidate security last fall. Um, and the last few months, they've been assisting counties in managing demonstrations associated with the pipeline project that's going in across the state. Um, Second Division Ecological and Water Resources is, uh, it's a long name and it's a big division. They handle about thirty-eight different programs. Um, I'll mention a handful of them. There's, uh, water permitting, hydrologic monitoring, uh, our dam safety program, aquatic invasive species. Our environmental review program is housed in this division. Um, non-game wildlife, so if you like to watch the Eagle Cam, uh, or if you participate in, uh, annual loon survey, I did that when I was an intern up in Cook County. Um, they manage the Lake Superior Coastal Program. And, uh, the land unit that they manage is called a Scientific and Natural Area, or SNA. And these areas help us preserve some of Minnesota's ecological and geological diversity. Um, the Fisheries and Wildlife Division, of course, monitors populations and manages those populations through harvest regulations. Um, they're responsible also for research, animal health programs. Uh, they manage habitat. They operate fish hatcheries for stocking programs. They take creel surveys. Um, they do some recruitment and retention of hunters and anglers. And they also work with the public and stakeholders. Um, the land units that they manage are called Wildlife Management Areas, WMAs, and Aquatic Management Areas, or AMAs. The Forestry Division is the, the one I, of course, am most familiar with. Um, forestry manages about two and a half million acres of state land across the northeast region. And they're responsible for timber harvest as well as regenerating the forest, uh, for the wildfire response in-state and out-of-state when needed. They manage forest insect and disease problems and terrestrial invasive species. Um, and they help private forest landowners manage their lands. And the land units that they manage are state forests. Um, Parks and Trails is our division of fun. And, you know, that they manage state parks and they also manage state trails. Uh, but they also develop boat ramps on inland lakes and small craft harbors on larger lakes. And in non-COVID times, they have a series of outdoor skills programs they teach called ICAN. It's ICAN camp, ICAN fish, ICAN paddle. Um, helps introduce the outdoors to people who maybe didn't grow up, uh, as lucky as I did in having, uh, parents who had a cabin to spend up time outdoors at. Um, our Lands and Minerals Division is kind of two fairly distinct buckets of work. Uh, the lands part of Lands and Minerals manages all of our real estate transactions. So, when we're acquiring lands, when we're selling lands, um, leases, exchanges, uh, utility licenses. Uh, the minerals side is responsible for mineral mapping across the whole state. Um, a lot of Minnesota's minerals are in the northeast. They also operate Drill Core Library that, uh, has drill core samples from, from everywhere in the state. Um, they're the trustee for the mineral rights assets of lands that we manage with intact mineral rights. Uh, but they're also the trustee of tax forfeit lands, um, mineral rights. And also about a million acres of school trust severed mineral rights, where we don't own the surface anymore, um, but the school trust still owns the mineral rights. Um, so that's our divisions. But we also have a lot of diverse partnerships with other levels of government, um, with tribes like Grand Portage just up the shore. Um, we have constituents in the public that are interested in our work. We work with a lot of special interest groups. Uh, it can be pretty challenging to try to make everybody happy. Um, you know that there's a lot of public land in the northeast region, um, but it's not all DNR managed. Um, of course, there's a lot of federal land in Cook County as well as, as DNR managed lands. We're trying to be a little smarter about our land portfolio, uh, through our Strategic Land Asset Management Program the last few years. Uh, our goal with SLAM is to make strategic decisions about potential acquisitions as well as good calls about divesting of lands that don't fit our portfolio. Um, we're learning to say no thank you fairly early in the process, um, when, when somebody contacts us, when, uh, a parcel just really doesn't make sense to be a part of, of DNR's management. Um, we use a pretty standard, excuse me, a, a pretty standard decision-making framework. And, uh, we're committed to working with all of our partners like Cook County. Um, we recently updated our SLAM goals and I'll share them with you. Um, I think they're in the packet. Um, they are to increase close-to-home outdoor recreation opportunities. And, uh, this is getting mostly at larger population centers so that people in these larger cities have, have a place to go, uh, enjoy the outdoors. Uh, we want to protect significant or rare natural resources, uh, protect and restore water resources. And that's talking about both water quality and water quantity. We want to mitigate and adapt to climate change, uh, expand access to existing land holdings. And while that might include acquisitions, it also often is, uh, easements or exchanges. And finally, to consolidate land ownership, uh, creating larger contiguous blocks of DNR lands. And again, this doesn't mean just acquiring, um, but it also can mean selling, uh, parcels that are smaller blocks. And, uh, excuse me, my coworker decided to print just now. Um, it also might include exchanges where we're kind of, um, moving the checkerboard around a little bit. Um, some of our ongoing work in SLAM includes, uh, land sales and process improvements. So, we're doing a continuous improvement project around our land sale process. Um, we're trying to build strong relationships with all of our partners outside of the department. Um, we're trying to do better communication internally. Um, DNR is a pretty big agency. And, uh, sometimes quite literally, our right hand doesn't know what our left hand is doing. And so, we're trying to communicate a little bit better internally so that that ha- happens less often and our right hand knows what our left hand is doing. Excuse me. Um, we're, we're also putting together some county snapshots. So, it's gonna have, uh, just some statistics about DNR and some of the things going on in each county. And, uh, I look forward to delivering that to you, uh, soon. So, that brings me to the end of what I brought to share. Um, I'm gonna make sure that you all have my contact information and you should keep that, uh, when you have questions and you don't know where to go at DNR. Uh, I might not know the answer, but I can usually connect you with the person who does. Um, so if anyone has questions about what I've talked about this morning or other DNR topics, I would be happy to attempt to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Thielman. Um, yeah, it's great to see you again. I thought I recognized you and, and your name from, from, uh, the Northern Counties Land Use, uh, Coordinating Board. Over a year, or, yeah, well over a year now, I guess, ago. But, um, well, open it up for, uh, any questions from commissioners if anyone has, uh, immediate questions.
Commissioner Mills?
Yes, Commissioner Starley.
Yes, um, good morning, Patty. Um, could you give us your contact? I don't see it on the pages that I have here.
I will. I don't think it made it in there. I will, uh, send you all an email that'll have my, uh, email address and, uh, phone numbers.
Great, thank you.
Any, any other commissioners have any questions? Comments? I, um, I, uh, I hear, um, well, I, I don't hear much about, uh, land acquisition from the state. Um, and, and maybe that doesn't happen a whole lot up in Cook County. I, I'm just not a w- or maybe it does. I don't know. I'm not aware of it. I, I hear more about swaps and, and, um, even just sell, I get updates, I think, from, from the state, um, just with sales. Um, rarely do I hear of it, I guess, in Cook County. But is, is acquisition a, a significant part of, of the DNR?
You know, in, in some parts of the state, it, it is. In, uh, in, uh, around, close to the metro area, we're really looking to, to provide that outdoor experience, uh, to more people. I think there's, uh, probably more opportunities down in the south, um, for, for protecting, um, prairie-type habitat, um, and, and pheasant hunting, things like that. Um, having spent a summer in Cook County, I, I know that there's just, there's not a lot of, of private land to acquire. Um, and, and so, there's, there's probably just not, uh, not, not as much opportunity there even. Um, and, and there is a significant amount of public land. So, it, it varies across, across the state. Um, Cook County is probably a, a less frequent place that we acquire lands.
Thank you, Jan. Um, another, another area of interest, um, in Cook County, our, our Parks and Trails, um, uh, department or, or board is still quite young and, and, uh, and developing. And so, I'm, I'm looking forward to any partnerships that we can have, uh, with the state down the road, um, and, and learning, learning more about, uh, best practices and, and just really, um, thorough planning and that sort of thing. So, um, yeah, I don't think I have any further questions. Uh, thank you so much for, for taking time to introduce yourself and to give us, uh, an overview of, uh, of, uh, the different roles of, of the DNR. And, um, now that we'll, we'll have your contact, we can, we can, uh, reach out if, if we have more questions, uh, for any other areas of interest. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. Um, if it's okay, I'm gonna stick around and, uh, see what the, what the, uh, spring fire season's gonna look like.
Yeah, absolutely. Please do. And, um, thank you again. Um, let's see, I'm gonna switch back over here. That brings us to Presentation Two B, the USFS Presentation. And, um, I don't know, who, who would like to start, uh, Mr. Crotto? Or, um, yes, sir, yes, sir. Welcome.
Yeah. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you and, and good morning. Uh, my name is Michael Crotto. And, uh, just real, real quickly, um, they inter- let, um, let Ellen and Patty introduce themselves. Um, but my, my role with the Superior National Forest is the District Ranger on the Gunflint Ranger District in Grand Marais. And I will let, um, Ellen and Patty share before we, uh, before I explain a little bit, um, you know, what our hope and intent is and, and sharing with you all this morning.
So, good morning. Um, I'm Ellen Bogardis Tremignac. I'm the Toftie District Ranger down in beautiful downtown Toftie. And about two-thirds of the district is in Cook County and the other thirds in Lake. I'm very happy to be here. Patty?
Morning, everybody. I am Patty Johnson and I am the Fire Management Officer for the east side of the forest, which includes both Toftie and Grand Marais.
Great. Well, I, on behalf of, of Ellen and Patty, um, really want to thank the Board and Board Chair and, and others for having us, uh, this morning. Um, you know, Zoom ends up being a, a very good, uh, platform in, in light of, um, uh, the challenges with, with COVID and social distancing and everything that comes along with that. But, um, you know, it, um, you know, timing, timing was right and, and ripe. And I'm glad that we have this, um, you know, opportunity and platform to be able to do this and continue that, um, continue to, uh, you know, develop, develop our relationship and, um, and understand, um, you know, why we do what we do. And so, um, you know, with the, with the Forest Service, um, you know, obviously with, uh, you know, northeastern Minnesota, three point eight million acres, it's a, it's a large chunk of the Arrowhead, um, that, uh, is under the, the management of, uh, the US Forest Service. Um, Superior National Forest separated up into five different districts. Um, uh, myself and E- Ellen manage, um, are essentially decision-makers for two of those five, um, ranger districts on the forest. And what we, what we wanted to share with you this morning, um, is one aspect of, of, of what we do, um, in managing, um, the land resources. And, uh, you know, at some point, um, you know, it might be, it might be helpful, um, whether we use this platform. Hopefully, we can be in, in person at some time soon. Um, but I won't hold my breath. Um, but there's, of course, lots of, lots of, um, you know, different, different programs in, in that land and resource management that we do everything from, um, you know, forestry and, and civil culture to, uh, fire on the landscape, uh, wildlife, um, hydrology, fisheries, um, special uses, recreation. Uh, of course, we have our beloved, uh, wilderness, um, up the Of course, we have our beloved wilderness up the road along the border and to the north and west. You know, all those aspects are, you know, essential and needed and under the framework of what we do. But today, with the time at hand, as we approach the snow leaving us fairly quickly and perhaps a little bit earlier than normal, is when snow leaves and the grass is there and dry and available. And we haven't had green up of the leaves on the trees. There is a potential of fire on the land, not only, of course, in the wildfire end of things, but also the way that we manage the landscape in a fire-prone, fire-adapted ecosystem and strategically placing fire on the ground. And so that's the hope they're here today is to share with you, not only current status, but, you know, why do we do prescribed fire? And then, you know, what are the plans, the hopes and the plans for the spring, summer into the fiscal year, to the point where we have season-ending events. Snow and rain come in October or November, depending on where they land. So I am going to share a presentation, if it's going to be hazy. Can everyone see the slide?
You have it.
Yeah.
All right. And also, I hate looking at myself on this thing. That mountain behind me is not on the Superior, in case anybody was wondering. I added this photo months ago and I don't know how to exchange it. That is Denali in Alaska, named the high one from the Athabaskan Denina people. All 20,320 feet of it, plus or minus, depending on the processes of the erosion and mountain-building orogenic events of the Pacific Plate, climate in North America. Okay, so a little, just I'm going to try and minimize the nice screens and what I'm seeing here. So fire management on the Superior. What we're wanting to do today is just, again, just kind of share what is the outlook like for the spring. And then, so Ellen will share that. We're going to parse it up into Ellen, Patty and myself. I will chat about the importance of fire, why we do it on the landscape. You know, why is it important to managing lands and the watersheds? And then, in light of the pandemic, you know, what have we learned over the last year about COVIDed managing fire with resources? And, you know, what are some of the mitigations that we do? And then Patty will end the presentation phase of it, of what do we have planned on the east zone of the Superior, that being Toftie and Gunflint Ranger Districts for this fiscal year, which runs through the end of September. And then we'll end with any questions, any discussion time. So we'll go ahead and start with Ellen.
All right. Good morning. So it's so hard to start with Fire 101, but Patty did a good job on this PowerPoint to try to shape what we, and explain what we tend to look at. So starting around, oh, November, last November, we have been watching information, watching some of our sources to figure out what are we, what's coming for our spring and summer fire season. We are lucky enough, I guess, to call it lucky, enough to have two separate fire seasons in northern Minnesota. We tend to have our spring right after the snow comes off to about June. And you guys already know that June is the wettest month of the year and it rains on us all the time and creates wonderful bugs for our wildlife. And then we tend to go into a summer fire season, which typically starts about mid-July and goes until about the first part of September, depending on weather. So what you have in front of you and in the PDF, you can follow those links, is things that we look at routinely to see what's happening with our neighbors and what we should be expecting in the future for us in northern Minnesota. The fire information sources, the first column on the left-hand side, those are just what's happening with people who actually do have fire going. Usually California is on there all the time because their fire season is almost year-round. We have a National Fire Map we can look at, see what's happening around us. And National Fire Information, where all incidents are put into a form where the public can look at it, see a map, see what's happening, et cetera. So that's just the general information that we're looking at. Are we seeing a lot of fires in Wisconsin, you know, as the spring evolves and the snow comes off? Or what is their fire doing? How's it going? How big is it getting? Next thing we look at is fire weather. And we do that sometimes many times a day during fire season. But we go to, you know, our NOAA Fire Weather, they give us a specific fire weather forecast for our area and for the western side of the forest. And the other thing that I'd like to invite you at some point to see during the fire season is the MFC, or the Minnesota Interagency Fire Center Daily Fire Briefing. Excuse me. That is a very comprehensive briefing that you can run, scroll through. And it goes from national outlook to local outlook into Minnesota. And then it breaks Minnesota down into its own sections. So that is a really pretty cool briefing that anyone can look at. Some of the other things, the seasonal outlooks, and we'll give you some samples here in a couple of slides. The seasonal outlooks will show you national outlook in terms of, are there droughts? Or is it very wet in parts of the country? And we're looking at the entire country. What is the temperatures going to do? Are they going to be above normal, below normal, about average? And those are put out depending on which indicator outlook you're looking at, sometimes weekly, but mostly monthly. And then the fire potential outlook is just that. Taking all that information in the national outlooks, then we have, the Predictive Services Group will go and say, oh, given the weather, given the temperature outlook, given whether or not it's, you're in a drought or not, we're going to map the United States and say, this is where we predict to have more of the fire potential, you know, above average, average or below average. So Mike, if you want to go to the next slide, we'll go take a look at some drought monitor stuff. Now, if we were in a Teams meeting, I could tell you to control click and you can zoom in and zoom out if you want to. I don't know if you can do that in this meeting, I'm not sure. But it is in your PDFs and you can take a look at it. The US Drought Monitor, the one that has the red on it, that is put out about every two weeks. And what it's showing is the currently, how dry areas of the country are. The scale, the white is, it's, there's no drought, it's normal. And then yellow, starting with yellow, tan, and then going up to red and then deep, dark brown, is the different dryness. So if you can find ourselves up here in northeastern Minnesota, we're in a tan and it's moderate drought right now in the Arrowhead. And that makes a lot of sense. Again, you know, we look at all these indicators, you get all this information, but we also talk with each other. And it does make sense. We haven't had a lot of snow. We came into the fall and winter in deficit, not having enough rain. So we are in a moderate drought at this point in time. The map to the lower right is the seasonal drought outlook that is valid until June 1st. And it's saying to us in the Arrowhead that we're in a drought with the drought removal is likely, i.e. it's going to rain and the drought's going to go away. Having said that, northeastern Minnesota, basically the northern tier of Minnesota is really hard to predict. So we all take this with a little grain of salt. We just have to figure out, you know, we have to watch what's happening. But the tendency is looking like our drought will go away. So Mike, if you want to go to the next one? So this one is temperature and precipitation. And what it's telling you is the probability of either being above normal temperature or above normal precipitation, normal or below normal. So on the left-hand side, the tan to sort of a red, that's a three-month outlook, the probability of the temperature being above normal. You see the big A over New Mexico and Texas. And then it just, as it goes north, it gets a little lighter and lighter. That's the above-normal indication. And it looks like in Minnesota, we have a 33% probability of having above-normal temperatures in the next three months. Excuse me. On the right-hand side is the precipitation. And we have, the tan is, it's telling that area of the country it's going to be below normal with those probabilities. And on the northwest, central to the northwest, there's a probability of being above-normal precipitation. And we have a 33% chance of being above-normal right there in the Arrowhead. And then it sort of cuts off Minnesota. Next one, Mr. Mike. Now, this one is, as I said, remember, we talked about the fire potential for the country where our predictive services people get together and work on this. And this is just for March, April, May and June. So March is in the upper-left corner, June bottom-right-hand corner. And as you can see, we're white, which is normal, meaning we'll have a normal spring fire season. So what does that mean, really? It means that we won't have fires. There, we're not going to have a lot of fires, but it's all going to be very dependent on how much rain we get and how often we get rain. As you guys well know, you go out your door and you have nice dead, dry grasses and last year's leaves and stuff. And we have people up here that like to burn. So, you know, burn their debris or burn their yard. We will have some fires, but right now it doesn't look like we're going to have any significant fire potential. It looks like too, we're going to be sending a lot of people to Texas, New Mexico, Arizona for the next three or four months. And I believe, Mike, that is the end of my section, I think? Yes?
Okay. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. So the role of fire on the landscape. So many of what I'm going to share with you is not a surprise to you. You know, historically, we're used to fire on the landscape. It happens every year. Of course, what the big variation is, is the frequency, duration and magnitude of those fire events. But all northeast Minnesota, you know, throughout most of Minnesota, historically has had fire on the landscape. Fire is a natural part of ecosystem processes, bringing about disturbance and variation and being able to diversify the landscape. Fire is part of a healthy, thriving ecosystems. Fire presents to the landscape the ability of a forest to maintain itself in light of changing climates, different forest successions, you know, other type of ecosystem changes. Fire is a natural part of that process that is good for the landscape. Of course, we know, and in particular last year, where we heard of the, once again, great amount of wildfires in the west, California, Oregon, Washington, Colorado. Most acreage, in some cases, largest fires in some cases in some of those states. They can be catastrophic. But fire is a natural part of the forest processes that keeps fire, keeps forests healthy, keeps ecosystems healthy. You know, fire is something that, you know, as we move into, you know, here in Minnesota as the climate changes to a warmer, drier climate, but also, you know, at the same time, we'll, what the predictions are, is that, you know, those rain events, the storm events will be of greater magnitude, but of less frequency. We're going to see fire on the landscape likely more often than we do. And so it's important that we, you know, allow fire to, you know, be on the landscape, to do its thing. Part of the, you know, our overall mission of the Forest Service is sustaining the health, diversity and productivity of the nation's forests and grasslands to meet the needs of present and future generations. So that health and diversity, that productivity, fire is a part of that process. And so here on the Superior, recognizing that, you know, fire is an important disturbance process. You know, how do we manage that landscape with fire and placing fire strategically on the landscape? And why we do it is what I hope to share here over the next coming slides. So prescribed fire, you know, intentionally putting fire on the landscape is, you know, according to what's called a prescription. You know, just like any kind of medication that we may have for ourselves as humans. We want to be able to provide the right prescription for the needs of the receiving resource. And so there's, you know, just putting fire on the landscape, that's just one overarching, you know, reason why we do what we do because fire is a natural part of our ecosystems up here and it's needed for forest health. But dialing that in a little bit more, some of the reasons of why we do this. And so you see here that the first is hazardous fuels reduction. We have for many, many years, fire suppression is something that land management agencies have engaged in for over a century or more. Native Americans and others have prescribed for fire on the landscape for some of their desired conditions that they want, depending on what resource they're hoping to, you know, develop. But for wild- for wildfire on the landscape, knowing that that comes and knowing that it's sometimes come in comes in force and in in greater magnitude than we're than we're used to. You know, being being cognizant of the of the fact that, you know, some of our, some of the forest processes, some of the some of the management hasn't kept up with the fuels that are across the landscape. And as Patty Patty said in the in in her presentation, you know, that Cook County is has a lot of public lands. Interspersed within that, checkerboarded within that is a lot of private land as well. And so where we have National Forest System lands in close proximity or abutting up against private lands that have that have structures or, you know, inherent value of those private lands, there is a there's a need and a responsibility there to deal deal with hazardous fuels. And so one of the, you know, one of the one of the management reasons why we engage with with fire is reducing those fuels, reducing the fire behavior that if left untreated, could present outstanding and and critical conditions for for wildfire. And so here in here in in Cook County, head across the forest, we we engage in fuels reduction, hazardous fuels reductions, really focusing on that wildland-urban interface. And you'll maybe hear it, you know, WUI, 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 that's the Wildland Urban Interface, where we have, you know, general forest area, National Forest System lands, you know, other public lands real close to private lands or or other or other lands that that where we're trying to protect a value. Sometimes that value is is a road, you know, an ingress, an egress. You know, some, in some cases, there is only one way out of the out of the forest. And it's a it's a it's a National Forest System road that we need to, you know, be able to treat those hazardous fuels in in close proximity to those corridors. And then, of course, in other areas where we've got private land with with structures and you know, values, you know, values of that are at high risk, you know, being able to do that work to minimize, not necessarily remove, but minimize fire behavior and give us a chance of success, depending on what your objectives are for that value that you're trying to protect. The other, you know, reason why we put fire strategically on the ground is for forest health. There are there are various reasons and strategic reasons why we put fire in some places relative to others. And Patty will will likely go into this in a more specific way when she talks about what we tentatively have planned for for this year. But forest health, of course, that that is part of why we do what we do, our health, our diversity, productivity of the forest. Knowing that fire is a critical component of what we do on the landscape. You know, we've we've got trees such as jack pine that are considered what are what are called serotinous. They require fire or heat to open their cones. And so, you know, being able to have a have that have a healthy forest, whether it's dealing with insect and disease, you know, creating patches that are are good for for wildlife and and diversity across the landscape and various stages of succession, various types of you know, vegetation in the areas, kind of all working to head together in a in a cohesive mix is what our our overall land and resource management goals are. Those are spelled out in our 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 forest plans, our land and resource management plan that we have for the Superior. But fire is a very critical part of that and a tool that we use to not only, you know, allow disturbance to happen on the landscape, but also to move areas of the forest in a trajectory that that we hope to hope to move it. In some cases, those are site preparation burns where after after we have gone in and we, you know, we decided that in an area, we're going to move an area from being primarily birch and aspen and fir to long-lived tonifers such as white pine, red pine. Some of those site preparation burns are preparing the soil and the vegetation to come back behind that and then replant with the desired species that that we hope have a, you know, based on based on science, what we what we hope to move that area towards that will be resilient in the future, based on the predictions for for climate change and our forest objectives, what we're trying to accomplish in that particular part of the landscape. And then another reason why we do what we do with respect to prescribed fire is wildlife wildlife habitat. You know, in conjunction with Minnesota DNR and, you know, working with with the tribes. You know, wildlife habitat, of course, and that diversity and the the needs of particular species is 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 heavily reliant upon how we manage the landscape and its and its vegetation and its habitats that are that are available for those species. So, you know, in some cases, that we might be doing a prescribed fire for a very small species, such as the Napco Blue Butterfly there in the in the upper, upper-left central part of the photo. We've got, you know, wildlife openings that that we burned that that you know, that are very specific to some species of vegetation that 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 butterfly needs for survival. In some cases, you know, larger larger landscape treatments, larger landscape burns for moose habitat. You know, moose, of course, being one of our beloved species here in in Minnesota, not only with the public, but also with the tribes. And we all know that, you know, we've struggled over the over the years with moose populations and and some of the some of the disease and and issues that are going on with our our largest deer species. So it's wildlife habitat is, you know, another reason, you know, why why we strategically put fire on on the ground in in appropriate ways. It's going faster. So just going to change, change gears just a little bit before I turn it over to Patty. You know, this, over the last year, we, once COVID hit, we really, we pretty much shut down prescribed fire across the nation on National Forest System lands. Because we wanted to make sure that we were protecting the public, protecting our firefighters. Not not only the you know, the the social distancing end of things and how do we work through, you know, a lot of these, whether it's prescribed fire or responding to wildfire, requires a lot of resources, people resources to be in close proximity. That's how we've how we've done it in the past forever. How do we quickly adapt in some of our intentional actions of putting fire fire on the ground? How do we protect the people resources and the public from the spread of coronavirus? And so pretty early, pretty early on, the Forest Service Chief, Chief Vicki Christensen put a pause on prescribed fire. We have now kind of moved into it. We've learned a lot over the last years as far as smoke impact and our be able to, you know, predict what smoke will do. Of course, what they're finding is, you know, we don't want to create a an environment where we are compromising people's respiratory respiratory systems. Smoke has been found to do that in various ways. And so we've learned a lot over the last year and we're getting to the point where, you know, land land managers are feeling more comfortable with proceeding with putting fire back on the ground, but with some mitigations. And so, you know, usually with prescribed fire, it doesn't always result in this and Patty may go into this a little bit, but depending depending on the type of fire and our resources that we that we need, we may be having other, you know, other resources. Some of our partners join with us to carry out a prescribed fire. So making sure that we get have mitigations in place to keep, not only keep the firefighter safe, but the public safe that perhaps are in the area of a prescribed fire. Or overall, you know, the community is very important to us to to make sure we've got, you know, you know, important mitigations in place to help reduce that potential of 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 spread of of coronavirus and compromising people's immune systems to coronavirus. So just just a few of those, of course, you know, with 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 coronavirus, we're all familiar with this concept of social distancing, sanitation, mask-wearing, that has of course been, you know, very front and center of firefighting culture, Forest Service culture. And so I won't go into too much details of that. We know what that is. But what it's what that's done is it's kind of changed the way that we interact with each other. And again, like we have Zoom here or Microsoft Teams or or any of the other platforms. You know, being able to engage in that important information communication, relying more on, you know, these type of of platforms to be able to communicate that, not so much in person where we're in close proximity. That just reduces the likelihood, of course, of of transmission and and keeps people safe as much as possible. Then one other, another aspect of this is is working together as what's called a module of one, where we've got essentially kind of like a family group of of folks that work together on a daily basis. They move together as as a as a pod, a module of one. And, you know, in in theory, you know, they're they they've been interacting in the in each other's environment. And so being able to reduce, you know, contact of module of one with another module has also been a a practice that we've taken on when it requires, you know, additional resources to to be in the area. And then also something that that we've learned, you know, more and more is, you know, what what is the smoke going to do on a fire? A lot of it is dependent on the type of type of media material that is that is going to be burned, the size of the burned, the smoke direction, you know, other other aspects of what the what the current weather conditions are doing. Is the smoke going to disperse? What direction is it going to go? And so we've really honed in, you know, as federal federal agencies, you know, understanding that smoke aspect. And, you know, making sure that we are we are reducing as much as possible the effects on firefighters, but also the the potential impacts on on the public who might be in in closer proximity to prescribed fire. So I believe that is maybe my last slide, and I will turn it over to Patty to talk about what we have, what we have planned here on the east zone of the Superior.
Thanks, Mike. So, yeah, I'm going to talk about kind of the progression of how we do prescribed fire throughout the season and then probably hit on a couple wildfire-related topics too, that kind of relate to prescribed fire. So I know this map is a little small, sorry for that, but we will have it posted on the Superior National Forest website here shortly. So if folks want to go zoom in, I can also email this out if people would like that. So first of all, let me do a sound check. How, can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. So this map is broken into kind of different areas of the forest. Down in the right-hand corner is most of the Gunpoint District. Moving over to the left is the shore, off the shore, kind of Tofte area. The upper left is around the Isabella area. And then moving over to the upper right, that is is east of Isabella off the Longless Road. So that's kind of where our burns are concentrated right now too. That changes from year to year. But that's where we're focusing efforts right now. So our spring season usually starts out in late April, but the snow going off like it is, we could see some burning here in the next couple of weeks into early April, which is very early. I think I've been here for about eighteen years and I remember one other year that we actually did some burning in March and that's it. So it is early. A lot of it just depends on our spring rains. Now, you know, we are droughty. They're saying we're supposed to come out of this drought. Really, how we are set for prescribed fire and wildfire through the season depends on our spring rains. If we just get continual rain through the spring, you know, a quarter inch every three or four days, an inch a week, that'll keep everything at bay. Temperatures too. If our temperatures are warmer, we'll get the green up a lot faster too. So it really depends on on what our spring season looks like. And I think those predictions are about fifty-fifty for us up here. It's tough to do predictions in the Arrowhead up here because of the lake effects. And people have a rough time with that. Meteorologists struggle with that all the time, with us getting good weather predictions and outlooks because of that lake effect. And you just never know how the storms, when they hit that lake effect, are really going to progress in the northeast area. We do start monitoring this time of year how we're tracking compared to historical years. And this year, from September until now, with precip temperatures is tracking the same year that we had that Pagami fire in September. So one thing that happens is if our spring season is dry, then we don't have much wildfire or, you know, we're able to keep it at bay and we continue to stay dry through the summer. What happens is then our summer and fall season, that August, September, is when we will start having fires. And that's when, historically, we've had the majority of large fires on this forest. Now, Ham Lake in two thousand and five is the one spring we've had a couple later in May and June that get to be a thousand or two thousand acres, but not large like Ham Lake, which was ninety thousand acres. So that spring, this spring weather, this kind of summarize, is really important for how we set up for the summer too. We can get rains in June and July, but if we're dry in the spring, we typically don't catch up for late summer fire season. So that being said, when we head into spring season like this, the first thing we start with is some grass burns. And they are smaller openings that are along the shore, are right over the hill from the shore. We burn them typically when there's either snow in the woods or precip or moisture in the woods. So they're pretty easy to hold. We don't need a lot of resources. And we do those mostly for migratory bird species to have some areas where they can do prey that are open, you know, as they're migrating. So the other really nice thing about that program, that wildlife opening burning that we do is we can get all of our people out on the ground. We can get our engines, our equipment out, test everything. It makes us, you know, feel so much better about where we're at with readiness for fire season. You know, work all the kinks out, new people coming on. You know, work all the kinks out, new people coming on, working together, teamwork, kind of building type of things. So um, that's a really great program in that sense too. And then we'll start moving into um some burns that we try to do along red river corridors um for loose habitat and for nesting um bird species. Um, those are a lot of grass and brush species. The water lettles have to be low for us to be able to do those. Um, because otherwise it's too wet um on those river corridors. Um, the big ones we have this year is this Swamp River, which I'm kind of pointing my cursor to here, which is down in the right hand corner. Um, it's actually off the Arrowhead Trail. Oh, there you go, Mike. Thank you. Um, and it's a fairly large burn. It's a cooperative burn um with the DNR Grand Portage. Um, actually, a majority of it is on state land in a wildlife management area. And we're providing um some assistance in terms of actually um overhead and some structure that the DNR doesn't have up here um to do those type of burns. The other one we have is actually along um the Pearl River as it goes into Northern Lights Lake, right off the Gunpoint. Um, and that one's a smaller one. Um, but this year with the way the low snowpack and the low precip in the fall, we actually might be able to pull those off. Um, the next phase of one that kind of come in um are these um, they're shallow, rocky jack pine sites that um are, are kind of scattered trees in them. And they have blueberry and bilberry out there. Now, the Nabokov Blue Butterfly, which was showing on one of Mike's um slides, um, lays their eggs on that bilberry. So we burn those to help regenerate bilberry um for habitat for Nabokov Blue. Um, those ones are small, but on those shallow sites, sometimes it can be a little tricky to make sure we get them on days um where it doesn't burn too hot and kill all the bilberries. So kind of some finite burning with that one. And then we kind of head into our May season, late or mid-May to late May, we try to hit um some larger burns over the hill right before green up so that we don't have to sit on them for a month or so. Green up usually kind of shuts down our spring um fire and um prescribed fire season. So we do kind of three types of burns. One of them is um site prep burning. So harvest areas that have um been completed, there's slash on the ground. We want to remove the slash. Um, get the right, the site ready for either planting or for natural regeneration to certain species. Um, and fire really um is one of the best tools to do that on the forest. Some areas will use mechanical means to do that too. But for certain pine species and first species, um, fire really is a better tool for that. Um, we do some under burning in pine stands to get rid of hazardous fuels in those areas. Um, a lot of the conifer species that grows up in those pine stands, we try to remove and then burn to get rid of this, the first source. And then finally, we do have some larger landscape burns. Um, yeah, Mike's got his cursor um on one up by Green. Let's see, let me make sure I'm in the right place in the upper left hand corner. Um, actually, that one, where are you at, Mike? Let's see. And
Yeah, middle one and Galaxy.
Galaxy um is out off of Dumbbell Lake, off the Longless Road. Um, it's a mixture of under burning, site prep burning, um, um, all kinds of different fuel types out there that we're working on. And then also on Tofti, let's see, down in your left hand quarter, Mike, um, I believe that is um what we're calling Kushway Lakes. That's right up against the boundary waters off the Sawbill Road and the grade up there. Um, and that one's the intent of that is to get a mosaic out there on the landscape. And that mosaic, we want it to um to simulate natural fire, restore fire um to the area, get new species regenerating, remove um the fuel loadings out there, all kinds of different purposes on that one. Um, and on Gunpoint, the one we have is called Sunfish Lake and that one is up by Greenwood Lake. Um, and once again, that one's a landscape burn. It's a mosaic, but part of it was harvested. And then I'll kind of tap into um some of these larger landscape burns that we're starting to do. And since we have the other Patty on today, um, we are really starting to work more with the DNR um in terms of doing um burns across, across landscape boundaries, which we've struggled with mostly because of administrative things, but we're kind of starting to get over those hurdles to do larger burns. And that Greenwood one does have um state land that was harvested that we're going to also burn for site prep purposes. And we have several more coming up in the future that I'm already working with Erin Milky over at the DNR um on setting up agreements um and doing burns with. So that's actually pretty exciting because then we can use different boundaries that are safer, that make more sense. Um, we're not stopping on a straight, you know, land um management boundary and that type of stuff. So some good stuff going on there. So some of these burns will continue on through the summer um and into the fall too. In the fall is when sometimes we'll do these large landscape burns. We don't get them done in the spring. And we usually target um about leaf off to do those type of burns. In the summer, some of these site prep burns are nice to do in the summer. Some of them where we're restoring fire and we want to many make the natural regime that would have happened in the summer season, um, we'll do some of those in the summer too. Typically not very large ones in the summer because we have to monitor them and hold on to them if we have an extended period of drying. Um, and then also with the fire seasons out west right now, we're typically shipping people off forest for most of the summer. So we kind of have to be able to support that national fire effort too um during the summer season. So that's kind of the gamut of what we do and when we do it on the forest. To do this, we typically need to bring in outside resources in the spring and in the fall because we kind of gear up and go from one burn to the next to the next. Um, those resources are also nice to have. If all of a sudden we get really dry and we have fire starts, we can shift focus and get and have them do initial attack for wildfires too. Um, so they're kind of dual purpose. Um, they're kind of nice to have in our back pocket when we're here. That's kind of changed probably the last five years in the region helping support kind of that buildup in the spring. Um, so we have resources here to do what we need to do rather than having an incident and then ordering resources which take two or three days to get here. So from a commissioner's standpoint of view, um, you guys should know that we have, we operate in that mode now. We have resources around, close by, quite a few in the state every year now as we go into fire season. Um, the other thing I wanted to hit on in terms of prescribed fire was kind of this process we go through. So we start planning these burns, sometimes a year ahead of time, sometimes two or three years ahead of time in terms of, you know, scouting things on the ground. Then the year before, we're going to burn them. In the fall, we start writing a burn plan. That burn plan um outlines all the details of everything we need to do. They're usually anywhere from twenty to fifty pages long. They include um like what are the special concerns out there? If it's soils, waters, private property, close by, all of those and how we're going to medicate, uh, we're going to mitigate for any issues out there. Um, what weather conditions we're going to burn under, what resources we're going to have there, how we're going to hold it, what are our contingency plans, who do we need to contact, what are the smoke issues? Um, what are we monitoring afterwards? It's a whole gamut of things that we have to um include in these burn plans. They go through um three levels of review. Um, and the final one being with our line officers, our district rangers who um give final approval on those. So it's a pretty extensive process. It takes us all winter to get through the planning process for all these burns that we do. Um, and it kind of helps us make sure that as a group, we're um accounting for everything that we should be when we're going out and doing these projects on the ground. I do want to hit on also one thing that we do prior to burning and we've really ramped this up over the last few years and we've found that it it buys us a lot as our public outreach. We spend time even years ahead of burns when we are analyzing this under our NEPA um talking with um the adjacent landowners. Um, and then, you know, the year before, we'll start, we'll go out and do site visits with them. And then leading up to the burn, we'll make sure that we're sending them, you know, emails or letters saying this is, you know, what's planned this year, heads up on it. If you have any special concerns, let us know. If you have spoke, if you're smoke sensitive, let us know so that we can start coordinating um better with them um instead of them being maybe surprised a week ahead of time that this project is being planned, you know, half a mile down the road from them. And that's um bought us a lot of um credit with the public in these burns. And then, um, let's see. What else to hit on then? Um, and then I did want to also emphasize that in any time of year, wildfire is our priority. Burning is something we um do for a lot of those objectives, um, but it comes secondary to wildfire. If we start having fire starts, wildfire gets, our prescribed fire gets shut down and everything is shifted um to wildfire um efforts on the ground. Um, so that's kind of a wrap up of what we do, why we do, what we do, where we're at this season. Um, the COVID is still is overarching for us in our program this year. When we bring resources in, we're thinking about where do we house them? How, where do we feed them to even minimize impacts to the community? Um, in terms of exposure, we're talking with them all the time about COVID and exposure. They have to actually go through a whole checklist before they can come here um in terms of what their COVID exposure has been before they get here, um, doing screenings with the crews um daily. Um, we try to also just keep them separate as much as we possibly can. Sometimes that's difficult when we're doing fire activities. But we are in the woods and we can typically spread people out enough um that these crews can kind of stay in their own little mo- pods um and operate um as a, as one unit. Um, and most of wildfires I went on last year, it was a successful type of approach to it when people actually followed those type of protocols. Um, we didn't have significant issues with COVID um spreading with our wildfire events last year at all. So that is um kind of a positive for us going into this year. I'm feeling a little bit better about continuing our fire program, our prescribed fire program even with COVID. Um, at that, I think we can open it up to questions um about any of this that people might have.
Great. Well, thank you uh very much for, for the presentation. Um, very informative and, and uh very important for for what we've got going on in, in our, in our area. Um, do uh, do any commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just want to thank you for a great presentation and um thinking of the fact that we are in a drought and that we have a number of um people that will start to come to Cook County to enjoy our forests and our waterways. Um, I know that every spring we oftentimes ban campfires at a particular time of year. And so um do you anticipate doing that in the near future? And then what are the plans for informing both the public that lives here as well as those who are visiting um of that ban?
So we start considering fire bans when we actually reach certain dry levels, which we use differ- different fire indices to track that dryness. And we look at, you know, short term and long term drought when we are looking at um the um really extent of what that dryness is. And then we're looking out a week or two at the predicted weather too. Um, and what that might bring us. Um, because fire restrictions take us sometimes a week to get put on. So we really do have to look a couple of weeks out. Um, but it's not something we've talked about just yet because like I said, those spring rains can make a big difference. And between now and mid-April, when we might start considering it, we could get a lot of rain. Um, however, in terms of fire restrictions, that is something when we start getting to where I'm thi- I'm thinking and the wilderness folks are thinking, you know what, it's getting dry out there. Or the rec folks, we'll start recommending it to the rangers. Usually they're already talking about it. Um, as a staff, um, our fire staff at the forest level, which is housed in Grand Rapids, is coordinating with the partners up there and what they're doing. So we can try to coordinate as best we can on fire restrictions. Um, and so um as a whole, we'll kind of do that coordination and make decisions on fire restrictions. Now, in terms of communicating that to the public, um, it's, you know, through every media source we have posting in campgrounds, posting at entry points. Um, if wilderness rangers are, are and rec folks are out in the woods, even our fire folks, we're out talking to as many people as we can to notify them. The one tough point we have is if people go in the wilderness for a fourteen day trip and seven days into it, all of a sudden there's a fire restriction. Um, one thing I've started doing is, is trying to get, you know, when, when we're getting that dry is to let our front desk staff know and our cooperators who are issuing permits to say, hey, we're starting to get dry. Don't be surprised if when you're in and you need to monitor conditions and take, you know, um caution when you're out there. And then I'll ask Ellen and Mike if they have anything to add on to that with fire restrictions.
So um I'll just um add a little bit on of putting on fire restrictions and taking them off. As Patty said, it takes about a week because we have to do um a formal closure and a restriction for fire. So there's, there's law that we have to go through. But we really, really want to do that lockstep with um other folks out there. So we do talk to the county and we do talk to the DNR to make sure, you know, how do you feel about this? Because we want to make sure that if you're in the, a campground in a state park and we have fire restrictions on, we want to have the state park to have the fire restriction as well to make it easier for the public, I mean, not to get confused. So um it is a little process, but we've got it pretty much nailed down and, and um takes about a week to get on. It takes about a week to come off. So that's why we have to look at it um in the long term.
Yeah, and I guess the last thing that I will add on, on top of what Patty and Ellen mentioned is um, you know, the, we, we will have um media outreach, uh, the public notices that will, that will go out with that. And then um then also, you know, just locally here, um, you know, WTIP is also a, um, you know, a source that we're able to um, you know, utilize uh pretty quickly to get out to the public um that might be um, you know, traveling and getting ready to go into the woods.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from commissioners? I don't see any. Very thorough presentation. Thank you very much. I, I um, I was going to ask the spelling, um, this is very trivial, but I was going to ask the spelling of that little blue butterfly, but it's Nabokov, is that right?
Nabokov. I think it is N-A-B um O-K-O-V, something similar to that. So, yeah.
There's a little detail I learned.
Yeah.
Today. I, I
You can see them right off the Sawbill Trail um up towards where the grade comes off, all the little uh sort of swampy looking areas, but they're not swampy. The bilberries, they're up there.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with bilberry, but I'll, I'll pay close attention now and, and, and go, go hunting, go bilberry hunting. Um, but yeah, my, I have a little bit of a background uh with the Forest Service and so I'm somewhat familiar with practices. And I, I do know that the Forest Service emphasized safety um to the utmost there. So, so I, especially in fires, I greatly appreciate that. And then also now with COVID, I trust that um, you know, those, those uh the, the similar emphasis on safety go, carries into, into that uh new concern as well. So I appreciate the, the efforts that, that um are made on, on, on that front. So
I will, I will, with you mentioning safety, Dave, I will just mention that in my twenty some years of fire career, the last three to five years, I've seen even more of an emphasis on safety with decision making. And that's a really, in my mind, a good change because we're not putting firefighters where they shouldn't be. Um, we're not exposing public where we shouldn't be. Um, and those are the two priorities. And, you know, when I first started in it in fire, it was talked about, you know, You know, people tried to do it, but there's still political things that come up, you know, local pressures, that type of things that influence it. But I would say we're really getting to where those firefighters and the public are really the priority. And different decisions are being made and the risk assessments are completely different. And there's a, there's a whole process of risk assessments we go through, whether it be with prescribed fire or wildfire. To help us think about those risks and put them in context of. What is their likelihood and what is their impact, you know, and help make decisions in that context too. So.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. That's, uh, yeah, I think, um. Think the message is out there and the practice is out there and we're seeing the difference. So, thank you. Thanks for your work. Any other questions triggered there? Otherwise, um, much obliged and, uh, um, we'll be in touch if there's anything, any other questions come up. But I really appreciate just getting the, the overall, um, you know, outlook for the season and, and just. To, to give us a, a, a new board, um, you know, touch points and, and introductions and, uh. And an overview of, of the, the fire system. So. Hope you have a.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Yeah, have a good rest of your day and, uh, yeah, we'll keep our fingers crossed that, uh. Weather conditions are in our favor.
Very good. Well, again, it was, it was a pleasure, it was an honor and appreciate, appreciate you all having us. And, um, yeah, maybe we'll, we'll, we'll do this again, uh, perhaps on a, on a slightly different topic. But feel free to reach out to any of us if you have questions. I think all the, the, the commissioners and, and others have our, have our emails. So feel free.
Thank you.
Appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
All right. Well, um, I think, uh, you know, time's flying by here, but I think we better take, uh, administrator Yorki.
Yeah. So if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to offer a, a couple of thoughts. We are, we are behind on the agenda. So Attorney Hicken has offered to postpone her presentation to next week if that would be helpful to you all. The, the other thing that we have on the agenda is the building cow. And I'm expecting that that will take with, with discussion, it may take upwards of an hour or more. And so I guess I would just like to back on how you'd like to proceed. Do you want to just go straight into the building cow? I, we're also going into the lunch hour and you guys have been meeting since eight thirty this morning. So I want to, to respect everybody's time. So I'm just wondering what, how, how would folks like to proceed?
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna suggest we take a five minute break, just, uh, take care of any, any, um, needs that, that we may have. And I don't know if that's long enough for everyone, but, uh, but then I think, you know, I, I would take Attorney Hicken up on the offer to postpone. Her presentation and then, um, I, I would rather not postpone the, the building discussion. And, uh, and, you know, I know that's gonna be pushing it, especially into the lunch hour, but please commissioners, if, if, or, or anyone, if need be. Grab, grab some food, uh, on our break and, um, and, and we can. You can sneak that in as, as we're having the discussion of, of the buildings. But, um, but I, as long as everyone else is on board with that, I'd really like to, to keep on that train. It looks like, it looks like we have consensus. Is that okay with you, Commissioner Story?
Yes, I'm good. I just had to move around.
Yep. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. So with that, uh, if we want to take a, a five minute break, I have eleven thirty nine, so we could just say eleven forty five. And, uh, and we'll, we'll, we'll wait if, if someone's not quite back yet, but we'll, we'll shoot for that. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Starley, just checking in to see if you're with us yet. I was just check, yep, I was just checking to see if you're here, Commissioner Starley. It sounds like you are. Commissioner Starley, I heard something just a little bit ago, but I'm not, I'm not certain that you're.
I'm here, yes.
Okay, great, great. Okay, very good. I hear you loud and clear. Okay, thank you. And we have, uh, Mr. Yorki, Mr. Silence, and, uh, I think we're, we're good to go. Hand the conversation over to you, Mr. Yorki.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, almost afternoon, commissioners. I've been talking a lot in recent meetings about, uh, work I've been doing around our, our facilities, planning. And just looking into information that has been compiled over the last number of years. Uh, I think as you all know, um, there was a process several years ago to develop a capital improvement plan. And I'm gonna talk about kind of some of the thinking behind that plan. But before I get too far into this, I, I want to let you know that I've, in, in doing this research and trying to get the lay of the land. Um, I've had to rely a lot on Auditor Treasurer Brady Powers. And Maintenance Director Brian Silence, who are with us today. And they have spent a lot of time getting me up to speed and digging up information that I'm gonna be sharing with you today. And so I just want to start by saying thank you very much to, to Brady and Brian for your help with this. Really appreciate it. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. If you'll give me just a moment. Can you see the slide?
Not yet.
Okay, what's going on here? One moment.
Yes, now.
Okay, great. Alrighty, so, um, today's, the purpose of today's session is just to give you an update. On, on our buildings and to talk about where we've been, um, where we are currently and where we might go. Um, as I said, there's been a lot of work done around, um, planning for capital improvements. And we're, we're in a position now where with the COVID pandemic, you know, things have kind of paused. And now that things are starting to change a little bit, we're getting more folks vaccinated. Uh, we can actually start contemplating the end of the pandemic. Um, it seems like a good time to revisit this topic and figure out how we should move forward. So I'm gonna start by talking about our current building portfolio. I'm gonna talk about the building and capital reserve funds and our history of trying to plan for. These projects financially. And then, as I said, just go over some of the work that's been done over the last three or four years. And talk about where we are currently and I'm gonna have some suggestions for you at the end of the presentation about next steps. So our current portfolio of county buildings, we have about twenty one buildings that are valued at a hundred thousand dollars or more. The total replacement cost of those buildings is just shy of thirty six million dollars. And the actual cash value of these buildings is about twenty five and a half million. And I should say these, these data are from twenty nineteen, so, and I didn't adjust them for inflation, so. Take that with, uh, with that caution. Um, I'll be showing you, each of these slides has pictures of a different major building. The courthouse is our. Building that has the highest replacement cost value at over thirteen million dollars. The original structure was built in nineteen oh three and the addition that houses PHHS Land Services and the Assessor and MIS. Was constructed in nineteen ninety eight. So of our portfolio, we have three facilities that, um, account for three quarters. Of the total replacement cost value and the actual cash value. Those are the courthouse, the YMCA and the law enforcement center. And you can see there the YMCA building that was built in twenty eleven. This shows you what some of the remaining buildings with a value over one hundred thousand dollars are. That's several up at the airport. Um, I was surprised to learn that the Bill Bollie Blacksmith Building in downtown Graham Ray is county owned. Uh, we've got a couple of town halls, uh, some, some buildings up the community center campus. We have a number of highway department buildings, both at the main campus and also in Hovland and Tofte. And then the law enforcement center and recycling center. We've got a couple of search and rescue buildings, mental law enforcement center and up at the community center.
Mr. Yorki.
Go ahead.
These are buildings greater than a hundred thousand dollars?
Correct.
Some of, some of them surprise me as well.
They are, they are on the list. I can share that, that report with you if you like. I, and I understand your surprise. Okay. So we also have a number of smaller facilities. These are things like radio tower, storage buildings, um, other equipment storage. The materials testing building at the highway campus, picnic shelter and tax forfeited residential property. Despite the high number of buildings, the total insured value is right around half a million. So. Quite, quite a bit lower in value than the other buildings that I've talked about. So how we pay for buildings and building maintenance. So we have a separate building fund. Um, that covers costs related to building, maintenance, renovation and construction. And in looking at the historical data regarding the building levy. Um, you're gonna see, I've got a slide coming up that shows what, what we've budgeted for, for buildings from year to year. And over the last twenty years, the levy for buildings has ranged from nothing up to almost three hundred thousand dollars. The current building, current year building levy is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, we added a capital reserve line item of two hundred and ten thousand. And that occurred after we paid off, uh, a, a bond from nineteen ninety eight that had a twenty year. Cycle and it was paid off and I think the previous administrator made the case that, you know, we, the money that we were using. To, uh, to service the debt should be put in the budget to finance future, uh, construction projects. And so, um, and I mentioned that, that bonding that we used for the construction of the. Law enforcement center, the courthouse addition. And I think there was one other that I'm drawing a blank on right now. So currently we have fifty one million dollars in bonding. Um, so currently we have $51 million in bonding capacity, which represents 3% of the, um, total mar- estimated market value of all the property in, in the county. So I'm, I'm not sure how well this is showing up on your screens, but this shows the levy, the building levy since 2000. And if you're feeling a sense of deja vu, it's probably because this looks a lot like the general fund levy data that, uh, Brady presented at the Truth and Taxation Meeting in December. And what it has in common with that is that, um, our history of budgeting for buildings is really all over the place. You can see, um, starting out in 2000, the levy was $100,000. The next year it was half that. And then the following year it was three times that. And then we have a bunch of years where we just didn't allocate anything for buildings. And so, you know, and you can see the, the, uh, result on, on the fund balance for buildings. Um, and expenses from year to year have varied a lot. And there are a couple of, uh, couple of blips there. One was the, uh, in 2019, we did improvements at the Y facility. Um, we did also, I think that was, yeah, that was the year that we started doing the courthouse improvements as well. And and you can see the balance, you know, started out in, in this, in the seven figures, and since then it has really kind of stayed in the six figures since 2006. And I'll pause there to see if there are any questions or comments about this, because I think it's kind of interesting.
I don't have any questions, I guess. It is, it is very interesting. Um, it's impossible for me to have perspective too far back. Um, just my awareness of, of county business is, you know, does not reach that far back. But it, it, it certainly helps, um, get a, get a better overall picture.
Yeah. And Mr. Yerkey, I'll just, I could just add a little, you know, to go back probably too far, but you might wonder why the balance was, got so high around 2000. And we, part of that was, we'd had uh, big sales of tax forfeit land. We hadn't sold land, I guess, in a long, long time. That was my understanding. And so a good portion of that, the county would allocate towards the building fund. And then, uh, and we also sold, um, the, the old Forest Service building to the EDA was about 200,000. Well, about $160,000 back then. So you had other sources of revenue besides levy to help build it up, ones around a million. That's all.
Thank you, Brady. In, in, of course, the, as the asterisk indicates, um, the, the last two years of, of levy are both the building levy and the capital reserve line item that was at it. So just kind of summarizing where we've been, um, there's been a lot of variability in, in how much we have set aside for, for building construction and maintenance over the years. We have not really had any minimum standards for the construction of public building. And there's, there's a phrase in, in the business called value engineering. And what, what that means, what it, what it should mean is that you, um, as you're developing a project, you identify ways to economize that don't impact the overall quality of the project. These, these can be things like, you know, changes to building aesthetics, et cetera. Um, but in the past, we have value engineered features out of our buildings that, um, I, I guess I would say defy common sense. So for example, the 1998 courthouse addition, um, used single pane windows. And the law enforcement center built the same year, was not insulated. And I, I think most of us can agree that, you know, if you were building a hu- a home in northern Minnesota, you wouldn't think about using single pane glass. Because in the long term, it just doesn't represent the best value, right? So, um, and we did do a project in, in the last couple of years to, to replace those, uh, windows in the courthouse, which has made a huge difference. I've gotten really positive feedback from staff on that. But, you know, that's, that's the kind of thing that, when you're looking at making capital investments, you, you want to make sure that you're looking at long-term. Not just the first cost of building, the building, but what, what is the long-term, the life cycle cost of owning and operating that building? And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation. You know, and even more recently, I mean, the YMCA pool, uh, was not adequately sealed, and the, um, drains were not put in a location that was the lowest part of the pool. So things like that can, can really make a huge difference in maintenance costs over time. So the other thing that we haven't had is we haven't had, uh, building equipment replacement schedules, and we haven't had a computerized maintenance management system. You know, and I, I want to say first, Brian, uh, Silence and his staff, they do an excellent job maintaining our buildings. They, I was telling, I was telling a group of folks the other day, Brian, uh, last week, the heaters in the community center were out. And Brian was out there literally in the middle of the night. I think he was there at like 3:00 AM working to get the heaters fixed so that, um, the facility would be warm for the vaccination clinic the next day. So, so there's no question about the skill and dedication of our staff. But I think the way that we've gone about investing in buildings has put them in a position where they're more often than not working in a very reactive mode. And I would offer that we should be moving in a direction where they can be working in a more proactive mode. And I think the, the way to, to get there is to provide some tools that allow us to kind of get ahead of the game in terms of upgrading HVAC systems before they completely fail. And having, uh, a record of maintenance, uh, that's computerized, that, um, anybody can log into and see, okay, next year we're going to have to replace this boiler, or the filters in this furnace need to be replaced X number of times a year. Those kinds of things can make a big difference in, uh, the quality of maintenance in extending the life of the equipment that we have in our buildings. So in 2017, the county started to develop a financial management plan which included a plan for financing new capital investments. And there was a lot of great work that occurred back then that, um, in my opinion, we can still use. Some of that foundational work included an assessment of current space needs. Um, we also did an analysis of population forecast to determine future needs. Um, rolled out of the cities, did an analysis of our major facilities to assess what kinds of investments would be needed in coming years. And then there was also the development of proposals for, uh, new county facilities. Notably, uh, an expansion of the jail was scheduled to be the first one. There were also improvements. There, there was proposed to be a instruction of a separate PHHS building. Or an alternative scenario also had PHHS staying in the courthouse, but constructing like a general services building. And then there was also proposed, um, improvements to the highway campus, and I'll talk about some of the needs there in just a moment. And there was one, there's one other thing. Highway. I guess, I guess that was mainly it. Yeah. So, oh, and the courthouse renovation. So, um, that's right. So the, the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, included bonding for a new jail um, for a PHHS facility, or alternatively, uh, an administration building. And then a new highway maintenance, uh, highway department office building, separating maintenance from the office building. And then once, um, PHHS or other departments had moved out of the courthouse, there would be a renovation of that, that building. And I think probably most of the people in this meeting know that, um, in 2019, as, uh, these plans were starting to move forward, there was quite a bit of, uh, public concern um, about the jail proposal. And at that time, um, there was a meeting, and, uh, you can, it's still on the county's YouTube site, so you can go back and watch it, as I did. Um, but there were a lot of concerns about the, the need for, for upgrading our jail from a class one to a class three facility. And so, um, that, it, in my understanding, that kind of put the brakes on moving forward with that capital improvement plan. And shortly thereafter, the administrator, uh, left Cook County. And that was followed shortly by the start of the pandemic. And so, since, since all that planning work occurred, there, there really hasn't been a lot of motion on it because of everything that we've been through in the last, uh, year and a half, basically. So I want to talk just briefly about some recent major projects that we've done. This is not an exhaustive list, but it shows you some of the key things that we've worked on. Um, in 2019, we did a re-roof of the YMCA. Um, and, and again, that, that's a building that was built in 2011. So, you know, eight years later, we were putting a new roof on it. There was a daycare bathroom project. That was over $100,000. We did a roof replacement on the courthouse, um, and upgrade to the fire alarm system. And then the next year, we, as I mentioned, we upgraded the, uh, windows in the law enforcement center and the courthouse, which were single pane. There was a new garage constructed up in Hovland. Uh, we did some maintenance to the museum in Grand Marais. And then also, uh, replaced the refrigeration system at the community center. So as I mentioned, when, when the, uh, capital improvement plan kind of stalled out, we didn't do any work to update the financial management plan. And I should say something about terminology here. So this, this came up in the discussion that I was having with Brian and Brady. The financial management plan is an overarching plan that, that looks at all of county government's finances. A capital improvement plan is part of that. It's, it's a five-year plan that, that, um, shows how we're going to be investing in capital improvements. And that was part of the work that Ellers did for us. That was included in the financial management plan. Um, we, like I said, the documentation that we developed, uh, three or four years ago is still useful. The space needs assessment, I think, is something that we can take another look at. The, but, but also what, what has changed significantly, uh, since that work was done, is that we've had a pandemic. We've had a significant number of staff working remotely. And I think back when the space needs assessment was done, nobody could have imagined that we would be where we are now in terms of people working remotely. So, you know, it's been a great test case for, for demonstrating whether or not remote working works, and we know now that it does. And in fact, just last week, you all, uh, approved a policy that will enable us to continue remote working in some fashion, moving into the, I think it was very, uh, forward-thinking. But, so, knowing that remote working is likely to be part of the equation moving forward, and it gives us the opportunity to reimagine our existing spaces. And so, like I said, the space needs assessment, I think, is useful. But I think that needs to be married with, with these new ideas about how we use remote working to, to reduce the amount of office space that we need in county facilities. And as I mentioned, with the end of the pandemic, uh, seemingly looming, uh, despite the new cases that we've had here in the county, we're getting more people vaccinated. And so it appears that there will be an opportunity to refocus our attention on capital improvements. So as I said earlier, uh, cutting corners on past projects has created quite a maintenance, uh, load workload for our staff. And they are working in a reactive rather than proactive way. And we have, uh, equipment in our buildings currently, and I'll get into the details of some of that in a moment, um, that is at the end of their useful lifespans, boilers, heaters, et cetera. Um, and they're going to have to be replaced. And there's some challenges to, to getting that done in a place like Cook County, because we are at the end of the road. We don't have any commercial HVAC contractors in Cook County. When we need that kind of work done, we need to call down to Duluth or the Twin Cities to, to get somebody up here. And so that, that makes all of this very challenging, and it certainly does add to the cost of doing the work. So we're going to talk a little bit about what some of our current needs and issues are. At the courthouse, we have a couple of boilers that need to be replaced. Um, in fact, during the really cold spell, um, this winter, we, we lost, well, and actually that was related to, to a different issue. But the effect was the same. We, we ended up losing heat in the courthouse. And that's, that's something that obviously is a critical need. So those boilers are going to have to be, uh, replaced. We, we have issues with uneven ventilation in the new part of the courthouse. Um, it can be blazing hot in, uh, PHHS on a summer day. Uh, those offices are on the second floor. Um, and right down below their offices in Land Services, it can be freezing. And that's something that, you know, if, if we were to, to correct that, it would require a significant amount of work. And that's not been scoped out, but, but it is something that really impacts building comfort, which can have a huge impact, um, on productivity. Uh, the courthouse parking lot requires resealing. And then, as it's currently configured, the space for public health and human services is really inadequate. And I think that's something that has been the case for, for a long time. Again, with, with the opportunity to tap into remote working as a resource to reduce our space needs, that could be part of a solution there. But the way things are currently configured, um, that space really does not serve the needs of that department. Um, similar issues at the law enforcement center. Um, we need to replace a boiler there. Office space is really limited. The prisoner drop-off bay and evidence room are undersized. And in fact, that picture there at the bottom is, uh, the, the drop-off bay. And, um, that is the north side of the building, and you can see that water kind of drains toward the building, so there's standing water in that area. And then the picture above it is of a door casing, um, also at the law enforcement center. And you can see that it is signif- significantly rusted. Really needs to be replaced. Um, at the highway department campus, um, a number of pretty critical needs. You've heard about the, uh, plans to build a new salt stand storage building. Um, that is because, uh, we will no longer be able to use the MinDOT, uh, facility after the winter of '22. The cold storage building, uh, which is shown in the picture on top, um, is structurally unsound. It's actually got major, uh, structural supports that are rotting out. And this is actually a building that I believe used to be up at the airport and was moved down to the highway department campus. And, um, it is, it's not looking good. And, uh, you'll have a chance to see it yourselves, because I've got something in mind about that. Restaurant, restrooms are not ADA compliant. Um, you can see, actually, that lower picture is the men's room in the, uh, highway department administrative offices, which is being used for file storage. There's no fire suppression system in the building. Um, the maintenance area is right adjacent to the administrative offices. And, um, Josh Dix, who is the supervisor, has a, um, has an office right off the service bay. And I was horrified to learn that, that his office frequently is just full of fumes. And so we're, we're in the process of trying to rebalance the And so we're, we're in the process of trying to rebalance the air handlers in that building to, to address that problem. But we just, we can't have that. That's not, that's not okay. We also have insufficient equipment, storage space on the highway department campus. We have really expensive equipment that's sitting outdoors. And then we have several storage buildings up there that have holes in the roof. The, the cold storage building is one of those. And then we have another shed up the hill that is also has a huge hole in its roof. So at the community center, a couple of things, the parking lot, if you've been up there, you probably know what, what condition it's in. It's going to need to be resealed soon or, or replaced. I'm not sure which. The ice rink needs the heater replaced for will in a couple of years. The recycling center is an interesting case. So this, this is a community asset that I think residents really value, and it's used heavily. But we have, we have some pretty major issues with, with it that are going to have to be addressed. And in fact, have gotten bids to, to insulate the loading dock area, which currently is uninsulated. And when we have a cold snap, like we did the first part of February, our staff are having to work in that area. And it's, it's only slightly warmer than the outdoor area. So, you know, when it gets down to 10 and 20 below, they're working in 10 and 20 below degree weather. So we're proposing to insulate that and also do some structural modifications to allow forklifts to more easily go between the loading area and the, the other part of the building. The parking lot there also needs to be resealed. And then there's also a question, and it is a question which, which I don't have an answer right now. Does it need to be relocated? Because there are some pretty significant limitations to, to the building as it's currently configured. And so I think there's probably conversation that we have about, you know, is this, do we want to continue investing money in this building in the short term? Or do we need a, a different plan that, that creates a new facility for, for recycling? We've heard some talk in recent meetings over the last couple of years about the dog pound, the city of Grand Marais is, is currently in the process of decommissioning its facility. And it's my understanding that the sheriff's office would, has a statutory responsibility to, to provide a, a facility of that nature. And so there's a question about when and how we would, that need. And then the YMCA, we've done a lot of work on over the last number of years. And so it's in fairly decent shape, but it doesn't need a new heat, heat exchanger for the pool boiler and the spa. So that's in a, in a very quick nutshell, that's kind of where we are and some of the things that we're dealing with. This, I, I was hoping when I started planning this presentation to have a, a lot more answers than questions, but as it turns out, I just have a lot of questions. And I think it's going to take us all working together to, to get answers to those questions. So in terms of where we can go from here, there, there are a couple of things that I want to suggest. First of all, Commissioner Swalson said, you know, I'd really like to, to look at some of these facilities to see with my own eyes what, what we're talking about. And given that we have three new commissioners on the board, I think it'd be really helpful for all of us to, to do visit, visits to these buildings and see what we're dealing with and have a chance to ask questions and all hear the same answers. Now, obviously, open meeting requirements would apply to that kind of gathering. So there's some logistics that we would have to work out. It would need, the tours would need to be open to the public and we would, if, if we have more than a, a quorum of commissioners going on the tours. And I think it'd be valuable to, to have the public join us for, for these conversations. I'm not sure how the logistics would work out. So that's something that I'm going to be working through. I also think it would be useful to convene a facilities community advisory committee, similar to like the highway advisory committee that we currently have. And here's my thinking behind this. First of all, it seems to me that the planning process that occurred back in 2017 and 2018 moved pretty far down the tracks before there was an opportunity for significant public engagement. And these, these questions about how to invest public dollars to create and maintain facilities that serve the public's need, they're really big questions and they're, they're expensive problems to solve. And I firmly believe that the earlier that we involve residents in these conversations, the better off we're going to be. One thing that has struck me from, from attending the highway advisory committee meeting is that we have members on that committee who are residents who have expertise in road construction and heavy equipment. And in conversations about equipment replacement schedules, those folks have been able to provide some really valuable input. And so thinking about how this facilities advisory committee would look, I think it'd be great. We've got a lot of smart experienced people in this county, folks who have retired from, from long-term careers. I would love it if we could find people to, who've worked as architects, building designers, folks who've worked in the construction industry, particularly commercial construction, and people who have worked in building maintenance and management, to sit on that committee and advise us as we start to explore these questions about what, what should become of our current facilities, what do we need to continue to provide service to the community? And what investments do we need to make in, in new facilities? I also think it's going to be really important as we move forward, before we, that are making any kind of new capital investments, I think it's going to be important to establish building construction standards that are based on life cycle cost analysis. And, and that, that is because the, the first cost of constructing a building, depending on who you ask, I've seen, I've seen figures that show that first cost to be 5% or less of the total lifetime building operational and staffing cost. So that, that takes into account all the utilities, all the maintenance that you have to do over the life of a building, which frequently they talk about a 30-year building lifetime. But look at this courthouse, it was built in 1903 and it's still providing service to us. I think if you, if you take the long view, you can build a, a structure that is quality that will last a lifetime, that is going to be low maintenance, and that's going to provide good, good value to the community. And so using a life cycle cost analysis, instead of just looking at first cost, I think it's going to be really, really important moving forward. The other thing, talking about community engagement is throughout this process that we, that we start to undertake, it's going to be very important to have community listening sessions on whatever our new capital plan ends up being. And I, I think we need to be really, really proactive about this. We need to meet people where they are. And so I, what I'm envisioning, again, post-pandemic, as things loosen up and we can more safely meet in groups, is to have listening sessions up in, in Grand Portage and Grand Marais, down at the West End, to invite people to share their ideas about the county's needs in terms of buildings and what they think the best direction would be. We need to update our capital improvement plan and our financial management plan. And that's something that the last time that we developed it, we contracted with Ellers to do that for us. I would imagine they're being involved or some similar company being involved in working with us on that. We need to procure a computerized ma- maintenance management system and begin using that. Because right now, most of our maintenance management needs are inside Mr. Silence's head. And while I have a lot of faith in his ability to remember what needs to be done, from an organizational standpoint, that's, that's a pretty big liability. So having that information in a, in a system where multiple people can access it and where all can easily see what, what maintenance activities are coming up is going to be really important. We need to establish equipment replacement schedules. Currently, we're kind of just, you know, maintaining things and, and running, running our HVAC equipment basically to the end of its useful life. And while, while there's, you know, I appreciate the economy of doing that, it can also create some big issues in terms of building performance. When you have systems that are, are going down frequently, that require a lot of maintenance, again, it affects building comfort. It creates situations where people, you know, people come into work and they're like, hey, it's so cold here, I can't actually work here, I'm going home. And that happened this winter. So having, having an equipment replacement schedule where we're maintaining our stuff and replacing it before it's totally at the end of its life is going to be very important. The last thing that I'm suggesting, and these are all, these are all suggestions that are open for discussion, but in thinking about some of the needs that I see, the city of Grand Marais has an energy benchmarking program. And I'm familiar with benchmarking from, from previous work that I've done. And what that is, is you, you take all your utility information and enter it into a system that allows you to track over time what your utility costs are. The system that's most frequently used is called Portfolio Manager. It's an EPA software. And it just allows you to track your, your energy use over time. Kansas City, where, where I come from, the city of Kansas City, Missouri, actually has a benchmarking ordinance that requires buildings over 50,000 square feet to, to benchmark their energy use and to try to drive their consumption lower. It's basically just, it's kind of like the Peter Drucker expression about you can't manage what you don't measure, right? So you have to be measuring your energy consumption to know where, where is our highest usage and where are the opportunities for, for reducing that energy use. So very briefly, I've, I've gone through this very quickly, but I, I imagine there would be a lot of discussion about this information. And so I'm going to pause there and just ask what questions or thoughts you have about this information and suggestions for going forward.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes, I really like the opportunity to look at this in a new and different way and in general, make our lives more predictable, not only our physical lives, but our financial life as a county. I think this makes great strides and a lot of good common sense in moving in that direction. And I want to comment the, one of the first recommended steps, building tours for commissioners, is really important. When Commissioner Hawkins and I first came on board, Director Nelson took us over to the recycle center and showed us some of the problematic areas, the lack of insulation, the conditions under which our employees were working. And it was very valuable. I've been to the recycle center hundreds of times, but had never seen that area. And so I, I really like what's been laid out here and it's a lot of work before us, but I think it's good work. And if we get a community advisory committee together, I can see that we can make great progress. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Swalson?
Well, I want to first start with what's pressing on my mind. Have we tested Josh's office CO levels and that type of thing to make sure that it's safe to occupy that as an officer?
We, we do have CO detectors in, in the building. I don't know if it's specifically in his office or where it's located.
Yeah, it just gives you a much more immediate, you know, just, just how serious is this? I, I don't want to put any of our folks in harm's way. If you've got one in the general area where the exhaust is coming from and it's not, it's not armed, then you're probably okay. Not, not healthy, but okay. I, I get that. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
There is one in his office, and it has gone off in back to diamonds. You open the door, the building has this. But there is one in his office and one outside of his office.
Okay, good. Thank you, Brian. And, and that doesn't surprise me. I mean, if it gets to the point where you're smelling that exhaust that strong, generally you'll have it go off. I've seen that in, in office areas that I've. Okay. The one thing that you stated that really resonated with me on this, where we're currently in a mode of run to failure, there is a general thought process out there that, well, you're getting the most use out of the equipment that you possibly get, and so therefore it must be the most economically efficient. It's been proven wrong everywhere that it's ever been studied, everywhere. Okay? The best way to do it is just what you're proposing. You have to, you have to set up your maintenance schedules. It has to be trackable. And then you have to have the life cycle built in. It doesn't always mean when you schedule and say this boiler is likely to only give us as much light, you can generally have it inspected and this type of thing. You'll generally get a few more years than what is planned, but at least it gives you that benchmark to start to plan economically for those larger expenses. And that's what drives that, by the way, when you run to failure. And like you said, you're at the end of the road and you don't have all those experts right at hand. Then when you short cycle them to bring them up with the equipment, with all the replacement things, that's why it costs, basically.
Commissioner Swalson, I'm sorry to interrupt. Your, your audience is kind of intermittent.
Oh, well, thank, thank you for telling me that. I'll lean up a little bit. So it was just a focus on life cycle maintenance, you know? And, and really, that is, should be our priority is just my opinion, you know, focus on the life cycle maintenance piece of it, putting the maintenance, putting the, the life cycle management versus expansion. And, and of course, we'll have to prioritize as we, as we move through with all of these. So I think you've done a fabulous job initially here of laying out some of those immediate needs that are out there. If we can put our eyes on it and then help work with the, the group to prioritize and set it up, then we'll have a better sense of that. Also, if the tours, i- if the tours versus open meeting becomes just too difficult for us to be able to get through, then we may have to schedule them, just commissioners at a time or something. I know that takes more time to cycle us through, if that's what we have to do versus, you know, getting ourselves caught up in, in a problem that we can't get through. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add to that, I, I had also hoped that maybe we could get WTIP in the, the, the paper to come with us on these tours, because I think the more we can share this information with the public, the further down the road we'll get in terms of having that conversation about how to move forward.
I, I couldn't agree more with that.
Yeah, I don't. I'm sorry, Commissioner Starly, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I would say that I have been through the jail only as a tourist. Very revealing. So I would bow out of that tour, but definitely take that tour and I've toured other buildings also, along with WTIP. How about our local newspaper? In articles too. And I agree about the financial management plan, definitely. And, you know, we, we need to have public input if, if we can get that from a, a few folks that want to do that. So thank you, James. It's a, it's a great beginning and a great first step to start thinking about the areas that we're responsible for. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to comment that I don't think the, the open meeting law is going to be a, a big deal to, to work through with us touring altogether. It's just something to be aware of, and then we just post it and there we go. You know, I think, but I could be mistaken there and certainly Attorney Hickin will, will tell us fully. But I think, I, I don't think that's going to be too big of a hurdle for us. And I think all of us being on the same page, seeing the same things, hearing the same answers to questions is very valuable, just so that we're all in that conversation at, at the same place. So, but yeah, wonderful, wonderful recommendations. And, and I concur with Commissioner Starly, Commissioner Swalson, and Commissioner Sullivan too, with, with her comments. So thank you, James. Well, any, any questions, any further comments?
I have just a question. As far as the financial management plan, and you mentioned going back to Ellers to redo that, I was under the impression that we purchased the financial management plan. I was under the impression that we purchased the financial management plan at twenty, thirty thousand dollars. And it was a program that we could update the numbers. Am I understanding something incorrect?
I'll, I'll let Brady chime. We, we did talk about that, Commissioner. And, you know, it, it does take quite a bit of, of work to, I, I guess. Sorry, I was just hearing feedback, Brady, from, from your mic. I don't, I don't know about the underlying assumptions of the plan. I don't know if that's something that we would need Eller's involvement in, but I, I'll, I'll let Brady answer that question in more detail.
Yeah, my only thought on that is I haven't used it. It was in Jeff's office. And at the very least, I think we need some background on how it, how it works. And at most, I think, have them update the numbers and then show us how to, how to use it to go forward. So maybe just show us how to use it or make the quick update themselves if that's the most efficient. That's, that's the thought on that.
Thank you, Adair Powers. Good question, Commissioner Hawkins. Don't need to pay for something twice if we don't, if we don't need to. Are there any other questions? Concerns? Comments? I mean, Mr. Yorkey, the way you, you line it out here gives me so much confidence and, and, and faith. And, and he just did a really good job. And, and I, I really want to commend Mr. Silence too on his work keeping things all together as best he can here. Without having this more comprehensive plan at, at a higher level is, is just really commendable. So thank you, Brian, for, for your work for years and years. It's, it's, it's kept it all together. Well, I don't hear or see anything else. Toggling between my screens here. Beyond, beyond this item on the agenda, the, the rest of them are mainly for references, unless somebody would like to discuss something in particular. It has, I mean, we've only been in meetings since eight thirty, so we should really try to see how long we can go here. But, or not, it sounds like we've got, we've got no more discussion there. And, um, um, I guess, Mr. Yorkey, I'll let you work on scheduling tours. It seems like a, a pretty good step. I guess I would like to ask commissioners what they think about the benchmarking program. And if we should pursue that maybe sooner than later? Or, or, or what thoughts are there?
One thing I'll add, if I could, Mr. Chair, is the city of Grand Marais, the sustainability manager, Shane Steele, would actually assist us in, in, in putting all that information into Portfolio Manager. So we'd be getting quite a bit of help with that. We just need to give him consent to, to look at our billing information from the P O, P U C and also get him our, our propane billing data and he can take it from there.
Nick, Commissioner Swalson?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And I think that's a great way to, to start into this program. You know, that along with the tours and something is, is, you know, we've got work in progress there. And it's very valuable, as you say, it starts to point out to you fairly quickly, you know, what areas you might want to focus on that are going to give you the most return on some of those, you know, some of those issues.
Any other, any other thoughts from commissioners here on that? Okay, well, I think my takeaway is we're all pretty, pretty happy with these recommended steps. And, and I think, I think there's consensus on, 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 on your process here and, and, and support it. So, um, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll leave the, the scheduling to you, Mr. Yorkey. And, and just let us know when, when you need some feedback on something or when, when we can start doing those tours. And if there's anything, any, any more details we need to discuss here.
You know, I will be providing frequent updates on this at our regular business meetings and as, as needed to, to make sure everybody's up to speed. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. And I, I do want to also point out that very impressive timeline for you to dive into this, for being in the administrative position that you're in pretty short amount of time. And it, it just really speaks highly of, of, of your, of your experience and your go-gettiveness. And, and I, I really appreciate it because this is, I think, a very significant, if, you know, it's, it's been talked about for years and years and quite possibly was a, a strong push for us to switch to administrative form of government, just to be able to get a handle on this. So, so thank you again for your work.
Well, and I've had a lot of help, so don't, don't want to undersell that.
Understood, yeah, absolutely. Yep. Yeah, Brian and Brady too. Yeah, it's, it's, it's admirable and I, I appreciate it. All right, well, if there's nothing else, I think we can adjourn here. Everyone have a wonderful day. Looks like the sun is out, at least where I'm at. And, and we'll see.